Chairman Bob Bloomfield from Public Works and Chairman Mitchell Farrell from Arts Entertainment, Parks and River. And also joined by our colleagues Monica Rodriguez and Joe Busciano. So I think we've got a quorum. Mr. Clerk, would you call the roll? Or do you need to call the roll? Or just declare it's a forum?
We do have a quorum of each one of the three committees this meeting today.
Okay, we'll take your word for that. All right, we've got some speakers. On public comment, you'll have one minute each. Let's begin with Patricia McAllister, Arregga Garcia, Armando Flores, Ariando Santiago, and Belen Ortiz.
And this is for item number one?
This is item number one. Would you care to read that, Mr. Clerk, please?
Item number one, oh, excuse me. Let me read it. Item number one are reports and ordinances from the city attorney, the Board of Recreation and Parks Commissioners, the chief legislative analyst, and the Bureau of Street Services relative to authorizing the creation of the Los Angeles Sidewalk Vending Program.
Okay, thank you. I think this is a good idea to have the vendors. I just think we need some rules, and I think I heard some of them. There should be operating hours. Like, now it gets dark at 5:00. We don't want them out there in the dark. You see what I mean? So I say like 8:00 to 4:00, 8:00 a.m. Food should be stored properly, either in refrigerators or, you know, whatever. Vendors must wear badges. So I'm assuming they're business people now. They need licenses from the city. So they have to pay for that and have their badges on. And that's good for them because anybody just can't be out there selling and taking their business. They've paid their fees, they can do it legally. Vendors should have a return policy. So if someone buys a shirt and they don't like it, you know, they need to have a return policy. So you guys have to teach them about that or give them some rules about that. And vendors should be, well, they're gonna have to pay some taxes. If they get a license, the state will know that they have a business. So let them know that they may have to pay some taxes, they may want to keep some receipts so that they can file on their earnings. And that's about all I have to say.
All right, thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Armando Flores with the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, VICA. Just want to say thank you. For years, the business community has worked with you and your staff to develop a comprehensive sidewalk vending program that makes sense for Los Angeles. Thank you, Councilmember Bloomfield, for listening to our concerns and making sure that those concerns were addressed. We urge you to pass whichever ordinance you decide on as is, and we look forward to continuing to work with you as this program is rolled out. Thank you.
Belen Ortiz, Carlita Vasquez, Claire Fox, Claudia Moreno.
Una intérprete, por favor.
Do we have translation?
Mi nombre es Belen Ortiz. Vengo del sur centro y soy vendedora ambulante. Antes que nada, quiero darle las gracias por todo lo que hemos avanzado hasta ahorita.
My name is Belen Ortiz, and I am from South Central. I would like to thank you for all the work that has been done here. Do I have another mic? No?
Is there any mic available?
Thank you.
Estamos aquí porque queremos que nos den un permiso. Queremos vender sin tener miedo y que no tengamos miedo de nada porque sí tenemos miedo salir a la calle a vender.
We are here because we would like to get a permit so we can have the street vending. We want to go out there and do business, and we don't want to be afraid because sometimes we are afraid.
Nosotros somos un equipo que estamos preparados para trabajar con ustedes.
We are a team and we are prepared to work with you.
Y también estamos dispuestos a respetar las reglas que ustedes nos pongan.
We're also willing to respect the rules that you establish.
Y, por favor, sí queremos ese permiso porque sí nos hace falta. Queremos salir de la sombra.
Please do, we do need that permit. We are operating in the shade now, in the shadows, I'm sorry.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes, concejales. Mi nombre es Carlita Vasquez y soy vendedora.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Carla Vasquez.
Y soy vendedora ambulante de Boyle Heights.
I am a street vendor in Boyle Heights.
Yo desde que tenía ocho años he sido vendedora.
I have been a street vendor since I was eight years old.
Me vine a este país, empecé a vender, y yo no sabía que aquí era un crimen vender.
I came to this country, I started selling stuff on the street, and I did not know that it was not legal.
Y para mí es muy triste porque yo dependo de mi trabajo.
It saddens me because this is what I do for a living.
Y me preocupé para pedir ayuda, que nos pudieran ayudar a llegar una ley.
So this was very concerning to me, that's why I would like to have a law.
Gracias a la organización ILA, gracias a Graciela, a esta Iselita, que nos ha apoyado.
Thank you to ILA, to Graciela, y el último nombre, Sarita.
Isela.
Isela, I'm sorry.
Entonces, queremos que en el momento 2017 usted ya se preocuparon por nuestra situación y queremos seguir, que nos sigan apoyando para seguir vendiendo legalmente. Gracias.
In 2017, you committed to working on our issue, and now we're back to thank you for all the work.
Thank you, next.
Mi nombre es Claudia Moreno. Soy dueña de un pequeño negocio en la calle 12, en Mayfair Street.
My name is Claudia Moreno. I have a small business on Clarence Street.
Los sábados de 6 a 12 en el Fashion District.
Saturday from 6 to 12 in the Fashion District.
Buenas tardes, señores concejales. Yo empecé mi negocio en el 2015.
Good afternoon, council members. I began my business in the year 2015.
Vendo accesorios para dama.
I sell accessories for women.
He incrementado mis ventas a salir a vender a las calles.
And now I have expanded my business, and I go out into the streets now.
Necesitamos un permiso, un distrito especial, para seguir trabajando.
We need a permit, we need a special district, a designated district, so we can continue working.
Ya que somos varios compañeros que estamos en la misma situación y nuestra familia depende de nuestros ingresos.
There is a group of people that are in the same situation, and our families need the income.
Muchas gracias y que Dios los bendiga.
That we can generate. And thank you so much, and God bless you.
Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon, council members. Claire Fox with the L.A. Food Policy Council. I just want to acknowledge how far we've come and acknowledge each of you for your leadership and your work on this issue, and all of the vendors and advocates who have pushed so hard for so many years. And I think since the beginning, there's been pretty broad consensus that we have an opportunity to expand access to healthy food through a healthy food cart component of a permit program. If we move away from having a permit program, we don't have any way to incentivize healthy food carts, to promote them, to encourage healthy food vendings, vending in neighborhoods that really, really need that healthy food option. So we encourage you to move forward with ordinance one, which does provide language and a framework for a permit program. I think that's in alignment with the original council direction and will be a great boon to the neighborhoods of L.A. that need that option. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave, David Levitas, Deborah Hyman, Doug Smith, Zonda Vilette, and Emma Crossen.
Hello, good afternoon, council members. My name is Dr. David Levitas, Executive Director of L.A. Forward. Represent folks from around the city, especially a rising generation of folks, twenties, thirties, forties. People who are college educated but believe in our city, believe in social justice. And I haven't seen an issue that our constituency has cared so much about that doesn't necessarily directly impact their lives as much as street vending. They feel it's an integral part of the life of the city, and they really wish for the vendors who have been doing this for a long time to make sure that their ability to earn a livelihood is guaranteed and that they're free from harassment. So we would encourage, along with the Street Vendor Coalition, that we not have overly restrictive requirements like only two vendors per acre in parks, and that the distance from structures in parks be reduced from 250 feet. And finally, that we make sure that we have a full permit system that allows vendors to get the training resources that they need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Deborah. I am a merchant at the Limerick Park African Marketplace. Every Sunday, the local community visit People Street in Daglen. Visitors walk our tables where we provide African items that are sold, all with the sound of the drum circle in the background. People visit local businesses as well. Limerick Park on Sundays bring families to eat and gather. Everyone in our small business community benefits from people we draw collectively. Local businesses who support us were shocked to hear council is considering a complete ban on park vending in Limerick Park. Herald's Coffee values and support park vending. The California Jazz and Blues Museum also supports park vending, among others. I am here today to ask city council to work with us on creating a just park vending permit system that allows vendors the opportunity to earn a living. We must not ban vending in Limerick Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Doug Smith. I'm an attorney at Public Council. I want to start by thanking the council and city staff for the years of work to get us to this point. And I also want to recognize the hundreds of street vendor leaders from across the city, some of whom are here today, and have been showing up for more than five years now to tell their stories and share their expertise in this policy conversation. So we have this chance to finally remove this enormous unfair barrier to opportunity that has kept tens of thousands of entrepreneurs working in the shadows over many decades. Legalizing street vending is a complicated process, but it's necessary for a fair and inclusive economy. So we urge the council to adopt ordinance number one and create a permit system that will give legitimacy to the workers looking to formalize their businesses and generate revenue for the city to implement necessary technical assistance, outreach, and education programs. We also ask you to consider minor changes to the parks and sidewalk regulations as proposed by the L.A. Street Vendor Campaign, many of which you're hearing about and will continue to hear about in public comment, in order to balance public health and safety with opportunity and inclusion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Let me leave this down a little bit. Okay, here we go. I come to you in the love and light of the infinite creator. My name is Zonda Aki, and I'm representing the Limerick Park Village in regard to the vending and the merchant. Now, Limerick Park Village has been going on for 25 years. We have legalized ourselves as an association, as the International Drum Circle Artists, and the African Marketplace Vendors Association, LLC. We've been doing this for 30 years in Limerick Park, vending and merchant. Our merchants are no longer there. The vending is the only thing that brings the economic value of family African diaspora to Limerick Park. It gives our children a place to go to because we do not have swings and playgrounds like other parks. They want to change our park into a dog park, where we have residents that bring their children out there during the day is a place where the bus stop, people come through. We have only two actual businesses that are merchant, mortars, buildings that are there. So what I'm saying is that Saturday and Sundays, with our distribution of vendors, the African marketplace, the drumming, it brings the economic value to our district. Our district has been ran down by mescline, homelessness, and that gives a place for the homeless people to come to get fed because we feed them every Sunday and every Saturday. Is a place for people to come bring their children because we do not have a playground out there, and they want to turn our park into a dog park. And residents, we do not want to pick up dog stuff. We want our children to have a place to come like everybody else. There's a library on La Brea that has a playground for their children. Limerick Park has not had a playground for their children in 26 years. I brought my son out there from six years. What I'm saying is that Limerick Park is a place of a family African diaspora. We want a stay African diaspora. We want our children to have a place to come to, a park to come to, where dogs are not biting them, where dogs are not leaving mess. We only have two merchants there, and the vendors are the ones that bring the economic value to our community. Thank you very much. And I hope that you have in your hearts to understand that this is entrepreneurship. This is a way to lead our children to a better way of understanding business at a very early age, having a safe place to come to. Our elders, when they have to worry, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Emma Crossen. I'm a resident of L.A. and a mother here and worked all over the city. And I was really, when I moved here four years ago, I was really shocked to learn that L.A. didn't have legalized street vending program. And it's been really exciting to see the work that you all and that the coalitions and activists in this room have worked really hard to develop. Just a few things I'd like to encourage you to include as you finalize these plans. One is to allow vending in Limerick Park. Another is to develop a permit system that would have educational resources for street vendors. A third is to amend the 250-foot limit that would not allow street vending within 250 feet of buildings, and then to amend the two vendors per acre limit that is also under consideration. So thanks so much.
Thank you. Faustino Martinez, Greg Bonet, Humberto Yavli, Isela Grecian, Jose Tugande, and Katie McCohen. Apologize for the botched names.
Hi, good afternoon. Greg Bonet with Public Council. I just wanted to flag that there's an error in the November 7, 2018, report from the Board of Wreck-And-Park Commissioners. Attachment B of that report indicates that there's a concession contract for the Echo Park Boathouse Cafe that has an exclusivity provision. That's not correct. The Echo Park Boathouse Cafe concessions agreement explicitly states that the concessionaire does not have an exclusive right to vend from food carts in the park. The contract says that the general manager may allow the concessionaire to sell food and beverages from carts, but, and I'm quoting here, it says, "That right is non-exclusive." It's very clear. I know this because myself, along with many other Echo Park vendors, attended the concession task force and Wreck-And-Park Commission meetings where that contract was discussed. And the task force members and the commissioners were clear that their intent was not to exclude small-scale vendors from the park, and that's why they added that non-exclusive language to the contract. Small-scale vendors are part of what makes Echo Park dynamic and enjoyable, and I want to make sure that error is corrected so that they're not excluded from Echo Park. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We will look into that.
Buenas tardes, señores concejales. Los saludo ya por nombre.
Good afternoon, council members.
Mi nombre es Faustino Martinez, vendedor móvil por diez años en la venta.
My name is Faustino Martinez, and I have been a street vendor for, ¿cuánto? ¿Nueve años?
Diez años.
Ten years.
Aquí estoy en representación de mis compañeros para recordarles a quien corresponda.
I am here on behalf of my team, my coworkers, to whom it may concern.
Que nos den la sorpresa de estos permisos que tanto anhelamos.
We really wish to see these premises that we need desperately.
Permisos justos, razonables, y flexibles. Queremos permisos justos completos, con recursos educativos para los vendedores.
This should be full permits, and also it should include like a guide or how do we do business now that we have, once we have the permits.
También nos preocupa en diferentes partes, en las diferentes áreas de la ciudad, nos preocupa mucho de la venta ambulante. También nos preocupa mucho en diferentes partes de la ciudad de la venta ambulante.
We also have great concerns about street vending in different areas of the city.
Pido, señores concejales, de la ciudad de Los Ángeles, que sea ejemplo para las demás ciudades a nivel California.
I am asking to every council member that, I'm asking that we do this program, and I guarantee that this program will lead, this would be used as an example for the rest of California.
Yo siento en mi corazón que todos ustedes van a ser el ejemplo junto con los vendedores ambulantes, ejemplo para todo lo que es California, que Dios me los bendiga.
I feel it in my heart that you will do the right thing, and you will lead this great example in California. God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Buenas tardes, miembros, señores concejales.
Good afternoon, council members.
Mi nombre es Humberto Yavli.
My name is Humberto Yavli.
Vengo del sur centro de Los Ángeles.
I am from South Central L.A.
Soy vendedor por diez años.
I have been a street vendor for ten years.
Nosotros como vendedores ambulantes.
As street vendors.
Necesitamos un permiso justo.
We need a fair permit.
Que nos permita trabajar libremente.
That allows to work freely.
Acatando las reglas de la ciudad.
And we are willing to follow the laws.
Yo como muchos vendedores.
As many of my colleagues.
Dependemos exclusivamente de la venta ambulatoria.
We make a living selling or being a street vendor.
Por eso, señores concejales, les pedimos con mucho respeto y educación.
This is our livelihood, so, council members, I am here before you.
Una ley justa para todos nuestros compañeros vendedores.
To request a fair law for all vendors, street vendors.
Señores concejales, necesitamos un distrito especial.
I ask you, council members, that we need a designated district.
Y nosotros, por nuestra parte, nos comprometemos a acatar las reglas que se nos den.
And we are committed to follow the laws or the rules that you create for this program.
Les agradezco mucho en nombre de todos mis compañeros. Muchas gracias.
On behalf of all my team, thank you very much.
Buenas tardes, señores concejales. Mi nombre es José Ugarte.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is José Ugarte.
Vendo mercancía en la Westland, la 7ila Alvarado. Vendo porque mi familia depende de mis ingresos.
I am a street vendor on 7th and Alvarado, and I do this for a living because I have to feed my family.
Día a día corremos el peligro que la policía del metro de la estación Westland-MacArthur's Park nos mueva.
So I go out there every day, and every day I am afraid because we're running the risk that the metro police will come and harass us.
Tenemos un acuerdo con el capitán Miguel de la Policía.
We have an agreement with the Captain Miguel from the Police Department.
Pero necesitamos el apoyo del Consilio para formalizar nuestro trabajo a través de una legalización con un sistema de permisos y distritos especiales.
But we need your help, so this becomes standard, so we can sell our merchandise legally, and we also need a designated area.
Se necesita que la ciudad invierta en esfuerzos educativos para que todos los vendedores conozcan qué son las reglas, y eso dará fuerza y orden.
Also, I think that we need a component, an education component, because when, if we're given the permit, all of the street vendors need to know what is expected of them.
Pedimos que tomen acción para apoyar a gente trabajadora que formamos parte de nuestra comunidad de Los Ángeles.
We need you to take action. We're asking you to take action for the hard-working people of Los Angeles.
De antemano, se les agradece su apoyo. Muchas gracias, señores concejales.
I thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm just giving her a chance to get back to work with him. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Isela Grecian with East L.A. Community Corporation and a member of the Los Angeles Street Vending Campaign. It was 10 years ago when resident leaders from our organization told us we needed to take action to support street vendors in their neighborhood. Since then, our organizers and coalition partners have engaged literally thousands of street vendors across the city to get us here today for this historic decision. Almost five years ago, with the leadership of council members Price and we said, you all took up the conversation on a permit system for street vendors. That day, it instilled hope for many of the vendor leaders in this campaign. And throughout this time, as vendor leaders engaged their peers, there were moments of doubt that city council would take action to create a fair permit system for vendors. Today, they and us are encouraged and excited that their work is coming to fruition. So we thank you for your time and energy on this issue, and we encourage you to adopt option one, and we really look forward to the long-overdue celebration for this historic moment for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, yeah. Katie McCohen, Kenneth Simpson, Carrie Morrison, Liron Gubler, Gubler, Lyric Taylor,
Good afternoon, committee members. Carrie Morrison with the Hollywood Property Owners Alliance. Thank you for continuing to recognize that the Hollywood Walk of Fame, it would be important to exempt it from the ordinance because of legitimate public safety concerns. I'm bringing you just a few very current photos just from the last week, showing the crush of people that surround nearly every element that in the Bureau of Street Services report recommending appropriate distances. We have the perfect storm of, and these are not, none of the vendors, I think, here in this room would be culpable. I think these are opportunists who show up onto the Walk of Fame, crowded around bus stops, fire hydrants, parking meters, the busiest crosswalk in all of Los Angeles, which is the Scramble Crosswalk at Hollywood and Highland. We have tour bus zones for ingress and egress. They will be blocked. You'll note people walking in the roadbed because there's not enough room on the sidewalk. So I thank you for that continued exemption, and I look forward to hearing what the plan is for enforcement in the new year. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. I'm Liron Gubler, President and CEO of the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce, and speaking here to thank you for including protections for the Hollywood Walk of Fame in the draft ordinances. It is imperative, we want to stress, that there is adequate enforcement provided in order for the new vending rules to be enforced properly. The chamber supports the adoption of draft ordinance number one. We believe this model will best allow the city to recover its cost and provide the enforcement necessary for this program to roll out successfully. Now, I've provided you a photograph, in addition to ones Carrie has provided. Look closely at this photograph that shows the issues surrounded with inadequate enforcement. This photo was just taken last week, and you will see a vendor blocking access to a fire hydrant and a city trash can. In addition, the vendor is smoking marijuana in public and talking on his cellphone and manning a hot grill that is directly exposed to passing crowds. All of this is occurring within a few feet of Hollywood's busiest pedestrian intersection. I think you all will realize that there are huge liability issues for the city associated with this, so we ask you to please ensure that there's adequate enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, councilor. My name is Kenneth Simpson. I represent Alvarado and Laburn Park. What we have to say right now, we just want to tell you, why you guys don't legalize the street vending Alvarado and the park. That's we can, the people can live and live good and feed their family. You know, I know you guys, you live in a big house and live a good life. We suffering out here by the police. I have all these tickets right here from Venice Beach. Look at all these tickets, all these tickets. I'm still paying ticket. Some of these tickets is not in the system, and I'm still going to court, and every month I gotta give the city money, and I'm not making the money. Sometime I go out there, I don't make any money. You know, it's very hard for the vendor in Alvarado, it's very hard for the vendor in Laburn Park. So we asking you guys, just think, think, and give us a break. That's we can live our life and get everything. Just like this guy just saying, marijuana, been smoking in the street. They already legalized marijuana already, all over the world. They already legalized marijuana already, all over the world. People been smoking it here, there, everywhere. The judge smoke it, the lawyer smoke it, police smoke it, doctor smoke it.
Okay.
And we want to legalize the vending. Vending is not marijuana, it's a, it's just a living. Thank you, sir. Have a good day.
Thank you. Okay, Lyric Telcar, Margarita Mendez, Maria Campos, Martha Aliba, Martha Castro, Michael Schillstone.
Buenas tardes, Consilio de Los Ángeles, mi nombre es Margarito Mendez.
Good afternoon, council members, my name is Beno Mel Mendez.
Vendo comida en la ciudad de Panorama City.
I am a street vendor in Panorama City.
Vendo al lado de mi esposa tamales que son muy populares.
I work with my wife, we sell tamales and they're quite popular.
Cuando gusten, quieran probar, tan invitados.
You're all welcome to come and try my tamales.
Vendemos para sobrevivir y para nuestras necesidades.
We, we do this because we need to make a living.
Yo sueño de crecer mi negocio y ser un dueño de un empeño de tamales y vivir una vida feliz con mi propio negocio.
My dream is to have, to expand my business and someday to own a big tamal business.
Pero necesitamos el apoyo de ustedes concejales.
But we need your support, council members.
Para darnos una guía cómo vender.
We need your lead, we need to be guided as to what we can do to keep on doing this work.
Reglas para seguir, una oportunidad para que el negocio y sueño de mi familia se haga realidad.
We need to follow the rules, we need to know what the rules are, and I also, I want this dream to come through someday.
Pedimos que se incluya en esta póliza un compromiso fija de la ciudad para formalizar, ya estamos contribuyendo.
We ask you to formalize this permit.
Pedimos que, que tomen acción para apoyar a las familias trabajadoras.
Please take some action to help the, the working families.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Michael Schillstone with the Central City Association. We'd first like to thank the city council for responding to our concerns and moving quickly to draft a new ordinance following the recently adopted state law. We are glad to see that the ordinance includes a 20-foot no vending zone around building entrances and a 500-foot buffer around entertainment venues. This is necessary to protect the health and safety of all that frequent these destinations. However, we believe the two-foot minimum distance requirement between vendors is much too small to maintain accessible sidewalks that promote the safety and welfare of all. Finally, we're supportive of a permit-based system. We believe the city's approach to vending should reflect the unique character of its neighborhoods rather than applying a one-size-fits-all framework. Thank you.
Martha Castro, Miguel Perez, Nicole Shaheenian, Patty Arcella, Rosa Franco, Rudy Espinoza.
Buenas tardes, señoras concejales.
Good afternoon, council members.
Mi nombre es Miguel Ángel Pérez.
My name is Miguel Ángel Pérez.
Soy un vendedor móvil en Exposition Park.
I'm a street vendor on Exposition Park.
Señoras concejales, vengo en representando, en representación de mis compañeros de Exposition Park.
I am here on behalf of my team, my coworkers in Exposition Park.
Porque nos preocupa la ordenanza de dos vendedores por acres.
We are concerned about the ordinance that only allows two vendors per acre.
Les pedimos una moción.
We ask you to call for a motion.
Que haya más oportunidades a más vendedores.
For more opportunities for more vendors.
Porque no queremos seguir siendo vulnerables ante la policía.
We don't want to continue being vulnerable with the police.
En Exposition Park somos un grupo de vendedores organizados.
In Exposition Park, we have a group of vendors, organized vendors.
Y la mayoría somos vendedores móviles.
Most of us are street vendors.
Y no obstaculizamos en ninguna manera la vía pública.
And we don't block the public, the sidewalk.
Por eso, señoras concejales.
That's the reason why, council members.
Les pedimos un permiso que sea razonable y justo para todos.
We ask you for a fair, reasonable permit for everyone.
Thank you.
Gracias y que Dios los bendiga.
Thank you.
Thank you, and God bless you.
Good afternoon, Nicole Shaheenian, Executive Director of the East Hollywood Business Improvement District. The East Hollywood bid supports the adoption of a comprehensive permitting program for all vendors as outlined in draft ordinance number one. The bid believes this model will allow the city the best recovery options and to provide the necessary enforcement to ensure a successful citywide vending program. As you discuss enforcement today, we hope that you can address some of the following issues that we've identified. First off, in the BSS rules and regulations that have been drafted, there's a mention of vending carts or kiosks. However, in our experience, vending transactions also occur from tables, blankets, tubs, bins, sometimes wheel carts. Is it the city's intent that these items are also considered kiosks or carts? Second, the draft rules and regulations specify a two-foot clearance between carts. We have also noticed that next to these vending carts are also these same tubs that are placed in order next to the carts, and we're wondering if the two-foot clearance can apply from cart, from the items to the carts rather than from cart to cart. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Rudy Espinoza, Santa Huerta, Ochi Soshi Ramirez, and Sandra Robertson. No, okay, I'll go back up, Martha Castro, Martha Aliba, Margarita Mendez, anyone whose name we did not call.
Sandra Robertson again?
No, you had a chance, opportunity to speak, ma'am, just, just one time. We thank you for your comment. Let me thank all the, all those who commented, we're gonna close public comment at this time. And let me ask the Bureau of Street Services, just to come up.
Buenas tardes.
I'm sorry, what was your name, ma'am?
Señores concejales. María Campos.
Okay.
My name is María Campos.
Mi nombre es María Campos, este gracias a todos los concejales y todos por darles esta oportunidad de escucharlos.
I would like to thank to each one of you for bringing us today and for listening to what we're saying.
Este, mi, el propósito de estar aquí, de estar aquí es porque yo soy vendedora ambulante de, por dieciséis años en Hálivo.
I have been a street vendor in Hollywood for the last sixteen years.
Y estoy pidiéndoles a nuestros concejales que, que quiten la propuesta de incluir la, la área de Hálivo. Estamos, al menos nosotros tenemos, queremos para todos un permiso y, y que ellos, queremos que los dueños de negocio pues este, hablemos, que agarren un tiempo para hablar, para hablar con nosotros, o ellos que lo tengan oportunidad, para que no, no excluyan la área de Hálivo, porque pues yo, yo tengo dieciséis años vendiendo allí, no quisiera que esto llegara a pasar, que los, que excluyan la área de Hálivo. Y no queremos ser un problema.
One comment that I do have is that I don't want to see the area of Hollywood excluded. I think that maybe we can come to an agreement, maybe we will have the opportunity to speak to the different businesses in the Hollywood area.
Queremos una solución en Hálivo.
We need to find a solution.
No queremos ser problemas para, para los negocios.
We don't want to be an annoyance for the businesses.
Y ese es lo que yo pido, que los dueños de negocios este, pues lo tengan oportunidad de hablar con ellos para que no excluya la área de Hálivo.
I would like to have a conversation.
Y a nuestros concejales que lo den pues una oportunidad.
I would like to speak, to have a conversation with the business owners so we can, together we can find a solution, and I am asking you, council members, to help us with this.
Porque la policía ha sido muy duro con nosotros en Hálivo.
The police has been really harsh with.
Queremos llegar a, no queremos llegar al mismo tiempo de antes, de, de la situación que la policía los, los ha molestado tanto, y muchas cosas que han pasado, y los dueños de negocios saben los, todo lo que hemos pasado en Hálivo, y queremos una atención para nosotros, de ellos para nosotros, una solución pues. No queremos ser problemas para ellos, queremos una solución referente a los vendedores.
We don't want to go back, we don't want to go back to the way it was before when we had a lot of problems with police, and actually the store owners in Hollywood, they know all the things that we had gone through. We need to have a conversation and find solutions together.
Okay, thank you very much.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna close public comment, want to thank all the speakers for your, for your insight, for your thoughts on this, as we welcome the Bureau of Street Services to the, to the podium. Again, I know that we're gonna be taking an important vote tomorrow on permits. Once the council votes on the ordinance, wouldn't we expect to see a report back from you on the permit structure? That obviously is a big, important part of this initiative.
We plan to work with the CAO on that issue, and we think that it would, we would need a period of ninety days to come back with a report on the permit structure.
Okay.
Adal Hashkoul, Director of Bureau of Street Services. I think one of the key things is the RFP going out to get a service provider, that's a critical element that the CLA be working on. I think what we've done here is actually put together, I think, a comprehensive rules and regs that are in place, and we'll work with the service provider to develop the actual permit process, but one key element I would suggest is, is the compliance and working out with the vending community on the outreach and how to ensure compliance. So we look forward to fulfilling the direction of council, and hopefully we will get the resources that we need to actually support the program and making sure it's a well-run program because that's important for all of us to be successful.
Well, as you know, the plan is that we have about a year to put the plans in place, to educate, to inform, to make sure everyone is in, in sync with the program as we propose it. Colleagues, any, any comments?
Sure, I'll go after Bob.
Mr. Bob.
You raise your hand first.
Okay.
In an abundance of, abundance of chivalry here.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much. Just a couple of questions and then I'm probably gonna have some recommendations after it's all over. I just want to say, first of all, Mr. Price, thank you for your leadership on this. There are many competing interests in landing on a program for street vending and allowing vending in our parks that will, to the best of our ability, be fair, equitable, and help bring some of these, well, not some, but this entire cottage industry into the light. And I think that we're all in support of that, and, and we're about to get there. So I want to thank you, Mr. Chair, and your team, and all of the teams of, of ours who've been working on this. It wasn't easy grappling with the sudden approval of the Recardolara bill, but you've done that quite well, and I commend you for that. Some of the questions I have, and I'm gonna have some questions for Recreation of Parks, and maybe Mike Schull will come up here separately on that, but as far as Bureau of Street Services, some of the comments were about enforcement, and I know we've talked about this before, especially once we land on the regulations through the permitting system. What do you imagine you're gonna need to adequately enforce a vending ordinance in terms of resources, money, positions, et cetera? And how will you also ensure that some of these sensitive areas that are excluded from vending will be enforced?
Gary Harris, Bureau of Street Services. What we've asked for as far as resources, we believe that at this initial induction of the program, we would need twenty-eight positions to enforce the vending rules and regulations, and that is just as a pilot. We propose a ten-hour-a-day enforcement program seven days a week with these twenty-eight members of staff would provide. As far as you ask about what it will take from an, I guess from an ordinance perspective for enforcement, we have proposed that the city look at amending other codes such as 5608 to provide a city ordinance that prohibits interfering with parking spaces, driveways, or anything that prohibits ADA access to the sidewalk, so that we come up with an ordinance that protects pedestrians, that is totally independent of vending, but is about protecting pedestrian safety on the sidewalk.
And, yeah.
And I think one area that also we've raised in our comments is it takes collaboration with the vending community, but one area we can use is what we did in the Hollywood Area Pilot for Walkability Pilot, where we used 5611 as a vehicle for ensuring no bulky items are blocking access, blocking sidewalks, and that could be a way to ensure in the no vending zones that compliance is ensured, because with the LARA bill, compliance and enforcement is limited to the A citation, which could be something that's, it's not gonna have the enforcement ability, so we need to work with the vending community to ensure that we follow the law as we've heard here today. But there's other means that we can enact if we need to, to move us forward to ensuring that no vending areas are enforced, are, are, are being followed, and the same thing, how we collaborate with the vending community to ensure that the process is fair and equitable.
And if I could add one more thing, we did propose the enactment of the Health Code as part of the enforcement for city enforcement officers so that we could ensure that the vendors out there do meet all of the health regulations, the safety regulations that normally would be enforced by the county health department, and we could do that a little more proactively if we had city resources involved in that type of enforcement.
And how did you come up with a two-foot rule? And, so that, and then, can you define kiosk?
The two-foot rule, we, we came up with that based on, we looked at the amount of space on a block face. When you take into account all the above-ground facilities that currently exist, and the utilities and the, you maintenance hole covers and everything else, if we went beyond two feet, it would severely restrict the number of vendors available on a curb face, and we knew that earlier proposals said only two per block, and that didn't, we think, fit with the spirit of what the Senate bill wants cities and counties to do. So the two feet was the minimum, we thought, that we could live with to make, ensure that people could get in and out of vehicles where vendors were eighteen inches from the curb. But in addition, there is also a three-foot distance required where a parking meter exists. So we felt that that would be adequate for pedestrians to, and the ingress and egress for vehicles.
You know, I think we need to really look at what we're looking at, the two feet, this is parallel to the curb, eighteen inches from the curb, you can have the vendors. Between each vendor is a two feet clear, has to be a clear two foot, but from a parking meter, from a, a, a street light, from other restrictions, it'll be much more. So we felt comfortable that you have parking meters, you have street lights almost frequently, and you have three-foot openings that you can go through, but they're not blocking the sidewalk perpendicular, it's actually parallel to the curb, eighteen inches from the curb away from the building. So we felt comfortable that that would be sufficient to allow forward passage, at the same time allowing the pedestrians and folks from cars to be able to leave their cars safely and get onto the sidewalk.
Okay, and the question came up about kiosks. Okay, and the question came up about kiosks, whether it be, it could be a blanket, it could be a fold-up table, it could be a chair, it could be a, a cooler on the ground, I mean, what, what constitutes a, a kiosk?
That's a very good question and we recommend that we do further clarification in the rules and regs that will be finalized with the Board of Public Works, this is just a draft of the rules and regs that we can meet the timeline to get something in place, but we plan to further explore greater definitions of the things that we're going to allow in the rules and regulations and we'll make that one of the additions to the rules as we go through the process with the board.
And, Mr. Chair, just real quickly, there are three items that, that the council approved back in April in terms of rules and regulations that are not in this report, one is the number of permits per vendor, the other is in relation to the stationary vending in residential areas, the state law does allow prohibition of stationary vending in residential areas, so this, the full council approved no stationary vending in residential areas, and then lastly, good food incentives, that is absent in, in the report and should be included as well, just the good food incentives, one speaker talked about healthy food options and we'd like to, you know, make sure that that's included as well.
The first item you mentioned is number of permits per vendor and we'll clarify this with the city attorney, but it's our understanding that that wasn't something we could do under the new.
Okay, there's a possible conflict there with what we approved in the state law, got it.
We want to clarify that before we put it in the rules.
This is an important element, we think, for, for vendors and for the community as well.
Right, the, the objective is to empower vendors who make a living with their carts and not empower those who might prey upon vendors who make a living with their carts with multiple permits and then they, you know, they dominate an area, so, thank you.
Did you have a question for parking regs?
Yeah, should we do that separately or, or is it all at the same time?
Let's bring it at the same time while you have some questions here, Mike Scholl I think is in the house.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mike Scholl, General Manager, Wreck and Parks.
Thanks, Mike, so in the report it mentions the two vendor-per-acre rule, can you elaborate on the rationale for that and when you calculate total acreage in a park, does it include bodies of water and nonusable space, like a hill that's forested?
The, well, to answer that question, the acreage would include, you know, anything that's within the boundary of the park, so if there's water, lake, whatever, it would, it would be included in that total acreage. The reason why we chose the, the two acre, or the two vendors per acre was, I mean, we have a number of parks, almost 100 parks are less than an acre, an acre or less, it just seemed like, you know, if you, I mean, all of you are aware of your pocket parks in your district, it just seems like it would be a lot to have more than two vendor, I, actually, you probably wouldn't find any vendors in those parks because there are not a lot of people there anyway, but it was, the rationale was just simply we thought that was a fair and equitable way of, of approaching the number of vendors per park.
But for example, Echo Park Lake is at least 70% water, so if you take that calculation with the water, you're ending up with upwards of 100 vendors if you do, if you calculate that two acres.
You, you could.
So 100, it's like 60 something.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, and, you know, yeah, you're right.
Should calculate usable space, I think, rather than all types of terrain including bodies of water?
It would be challenging to do it by the terrain because, you know, Griffith Park, I mean, if you look at it on a flat surface, it's much smaller, but when you look at it in the vertical surfaces, there's a lot of acreage there, but.
What I wanted, where I'm going is I want to make sure we don't get away from our primary chartered requirement, parks and open space for, for active and passive recreational purposes and that's the number one priority as per city charter for parks, and so I think we have to square that with what is obviously a culture in Los Angeles that people love and enjoy and, and then regulate accordingly.
Right, yeah, I mean, it, it can be, I mean, we can, we can discuss the, the numbers per acreage, I mean, it's, it, it is very difficult for us to find one size fits all for every park and it's, I mean, I know there was some discussion like on the 250-feet distance from structures and things, I mean, it's just a real challenge for us to call out every park and say, this is unique about this park, so that these rules applies to this park, a lot of what your concerns would, we, would be addressed by the fact that you wouldn't be within, allowed within 250 feet as it's proposed by us, within any structure playground or building, and I think there might be questions on that as well, but the...
That is my only other question to you actually, is the 250-feet rule, because that came up in a lot of the comments as well.
Oh, I mean, it's, it's, again, it's not easy for us to define, you know, to make something work for every park, so, you know, I could give you different examples, like, you know, for a busy recreation center, you, you know, where there's a lot of people coming in and out of the facility, we just don't want things in, you know, blocking the egress and exiting of the building or in, you know, and so we use 250 feet, you know, the observatory has thousands of people around it at any one time, so having, you know, vendors real close, I mean, these are extreme examples, but that's the reason why we didn't get into exactly defining every single park, because we would almost have to, to make it, to make it work, so we use 250 feet as a guiding rule that we were comfortable with, that we thought would address most of the conditions that you would find in any park.
And that brings me back to Echo Park, since that came up a lot today and it came up a lot in the, in the report that was submitted by the associated vendors, so Echo Park has more water than land, it's a very well-used park, we spent $40 million in renovating it in 2013, 47 million, and it also has lots of structures, so the flip side of that is because of the structures around the park, it would also highly restrict the ability to have enough of the carts that the park could probably accommodate, so, I mean, there's kind of a push and pull there, but.
That's kind of where we were going with it, I mean, is when, you know, and again, it's just trying to find a generalization that we think could work citywide for the park system, because otherwise it would become very difficult to, to, to enforce, you know, park by park.
Okay, thank you, I don't want to hog all the time here.
Whoa, you almost did.
I'm sorry.
Great, thank, thank you and I certainly want to start by, by thanking Mr. Price, you have really been, been the champion of this and have moved this forward and, and I think we're all, we're all grateful to you for getting where we are today, I know it's been, there's been a lot of challenges and, and the Lara bill really, you know, stripped away our ability to do a lot on this, which makes it even, even more of a challenge, and I appreciate the work the C L A did on the, the cost-benefit analysis, you know, in this, in trying to figure out whether we go regulation or whether we go permitting, one of the issues was the cost-benefit and.
Excuse me, can we, can we have some water please, ma'am?
Okay, I forgot where I was on that, but basically, the, the cost-benefit analysis gave us a, a sense of what the cost of enforcement would be, which is great, it doesn't really give us a sense of what the cost of the permitting is going to be, because we really don't know that yet and, and I have a feeling it's going to be substantial and I want to, and I want to make sure that at the end of the day that we don't do anything that's going to be too burdensome for our street vendors, because the whole idea of this is to allow street vending and allow folks to be able to move forward without such an expensive permit that it makes it hard to, to move forward, but I understand and having talked to the street vendors that, that folks really want, you know, regardless of what it costs or want, they want to bring the cost down, they want to have a permit, because that, that is legitimacy, so I'm, I'm, as we talked about, I'm, I'm prepared to move forward with the idea of, of setting that time in 2020 when we move forward with a permit no matter what. That being said, we're going to have to worry about the costs and figure that out and, and I assume that at the end of the day, we're, there's going to be a general fund request because the, this, there's no way, given the structure of all this, that it can be cost-neutral and not be overly burdensome for our street vendors, so we need to figure that out as we move forward with the permitting and, and perhaps there's a way as we look at it now, as we move forward, and I don't want to get into it now, but I wanted to put this out there and, or, for either just to put it out there or for comment, that as we move forward, maybe we have, we bifurcate the permitting to some extent to have the more location-specific permits, which are expensive for us, but are important on areas where there's a lot of competition, and then maybe more generalized permits on areas where it's not as competitive, but you, you know, like in my district, we don't have as many competitive spots, but we have areas and I know some of the street vendors in my area, they don't, they make a living by being in one spot early in the morning and then they know where the lunch spot is, they move there in the afternoon and then they go somewhere else in the evening, so if we limit them to a very, to one specific spot, it's going to be very difficult, so as we move forward with the permitting, I guess we need, putting it out there that we need to think about potential bifurcation where we have a spot, a very strict permitting schedule for the high competitive spots and more general permitting for areas where people like to move from, from spot to spot, but I don't think we need to decide that now, but if you wanted to comment on that now, I'm happy to, to hear the comment, but again, we have a year to come up with these things.
I mean, I think we're going to learn from this and, and the resources are critical to our implementation and I think, council member, I think you're right about where we focus the resources, it's where we have the highest and most concentrated vending locations and the, the, if you look at our recommendation, we look at an evolution from a rules and regs in the beginning to a permitting for these high-use areas and then maybe expanding it citywide and, and having the resources proportioned accordingly, so I agree with you, I think we need to have a different approach of compliance and implementation because the resources that's needed is going to drive how we implement the program and the focus has to be on the areas that have the highest impact to the public health and safety, where you have the highest concentration and, and we can evolve this over time from the rules and regs to a focused area where they have, have, have the highest use and issue permits there that can be a little more expensive because they have a higher revenue potential, to other parts of the city that we can at some point expand, but I agree with you, I think we have a year to work that out and we need to have more dialogue to develop that, especially when bringing the service provider onboard to have that, that dialogue.
And, and I also wanted to ask you about, I was concerned when you, you mentioned that there, there may be difficulty in limiting the number of permits that each applicant can have, I, I looked at it very closely from, from my perspective, I didn't see that limitation in, in the Lara bill and if it's there, I really want to understand how it's there because like Mr. O'Farrell said, I see a, a real potential problem if, if those, if the number is unlimited for a big corporation to come in and buy all of these permits up and then sell them or, you know, do something exploitive to folks who are moving forward, so I think that's something we need to, we don't have to resolve today, but we need to keep our eye on because we don't, we want, we want to empower our local vendors, we don't want to create an avenue for a big corporation to basically hire people to do these things.
I think the directions we hear loud and clear about the single permit for single vendor, that's clear, we'll work with the city attorney on ensuring how that is implemented and, and whether it's part of the rules and regs, which is not permit-driven, or part of the permit that we develop with the service provider and how we put the language and the restrictions, I think we worked that, we hear you loud and clear.
And you mentioned the, the health codes, which I thought was interesting, because normally when we enforce a, a state or county code, the money for that, for a violation goes to the state or county, but am I to understand that by us including it in our codes, we can enforce and be able to, to capture those dollars to put back into enforcement?
Well, that's a discussion we need to have with county health, but we do believe that if it becomes part of the city's enforcement program, it should be treated like any other violation that we currently enforce.
Yeah, and I, I think that's more a question for our, our city attorney, because county health, of course, they have an interest in keeping all the money with them and, and our city folks need to figure out how to draft it in such a way that, that we're able to not only enforce, but we're able to, to capture the, the funding from that, we're on the same page on that, just, just putting that out there, and the, the two-feet thing, we talked about a little bit, but could it not be just simple to say there needs to be a two-foot clearance between them, that way, whatever, however you define kiosk or product, you know?
Well, we've had some further discussion on that since I've been here with the city attorney and we are going to recommend that it be three feet in order to ensure that we meet minimum ADA requirements.
And is that, is that a, a three-foot clearance, clearance, or is it a, a distance between kiosks or?
Distance between the kios, uh, kiosk, I'm sorry, must be a minimum of three feet.
But I think, my understanding, the way I was understanding difference is free and clear distance, so it has to be free from anything in the ground that obstructs people's access, so if we're talking about three feet or two feet, has to be free and clear and, and that's really what we're looking at.
Not, not, that's, I think this is another one of those.
One extreme for the other.
I think, I think what we're talking about is free and clear distance, doesn't matter from where, it's between two vendors, two foot, right now we're recommending three feet, clear and free from any obstacles between two vendors.
Well, this is a detail we're going to have to obviously clarify and, and clean up and, and get a better fixture on over the next several weeks, but we, we do appreciate the input from the city attorney in keeping us legally correct, Mr. Boomfeld, any other questions?
Go ahead, I'll, I'll use the floor, thank you.
Mrs. Rodriguez, who is yours?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, thank you gentlemen for your work on this, I know it's been quite extensive for a long time and you've had to pivot a couple of times given some of the changes that have occurred, and of course, thank you to my colleagues, Mr. O'Farrell, I think you very eloquently captured a lot of the concerns that we have as it relates to our parks in particular because of that dynamic and given that mic, I know you have an incredibly difficult challenge where we don't have a standardized kind of format when it comes to evaluating the space in the way that we can, say, our sidewalks, that being said, is, and I guess I don't know if this is more so for the city attorney to help me better understand, but, you know, I know back when I worked for Mike Hernandez and the very first street vending district was established in MacArthur Park, is there a prohibition from utilizing that same approach and, you know, we do have this parallel process this, that we're engaging in as it relates to the public right-of-way on our sidewalks, is there any prohibition from establishing, rather than doing this two-per-acre kind of establishing these areas based on the spaces at the parks that they would be designated based on the available space, rather than you having to formulate, rather than you having to formulate kind of per acreage, a more kind of, based on the park, kind of establishing a, a concession district or a vending district for that particular park given the nature of, of the dynamics that you're grappling with?
Yeah, I'd have to defer to the city attorney on that, I, I don't know that the current law would allow that, but I, I'd have to prefer, defer.
Good afternoon, Valerie Flores, Senior Assistant City Attorney, the new state law does allow the city to protect the recreational and outdoor nature of a park, so it does let you limit the number of vendors in a park, but it also would allow you the freedom to, on a park-by-park basis, determine what is the right amount of vendors for that park, so you could adopt an overall rule of two per acre and then you might want to, for certain parks, vary that rule for that specific park to either allow more or less vendors depending on, again, the physical features or the historic nature of how much vending has occurred in the park to date or in the past.
Yeah, I just, I, you know, I, hearing the concerns of, of what Mr. O'Farrell raised as it relates to Echo Park and just knowing some of the physical challenges and differences among so many of our parks, that I thought, would, would it not be better to approach it from the, these are the designated areas within the park space so that we could manage that more effectively and I'm thinking just for the purposes of your staff and, you know, I know cost recovery and enforcement and all of these pieces are going to be very important just to, to see if that might be a, a solution to what we're discussing as it relates to Wreck and Parks.
Just to tag along to what Ms. Rodriguez is saying, yeah, I, I think a, a two-acre sort of blanket rule may not work too well, I mean, in my calculations, that would allow 64 vendors at Echo Park Lake, that's way too many, it's just too many, so if you, if you calculate the body of water with that, and we had up to that before the renovation and the park was almost completely unusable, so before we, I think, land on a definition of what would be allowable based on an acreage calculation, it, it would be more... calculation, it would be more sensible to take a look at the space within a park that is suitable for vending, right? And then calculate from there.
Yeah, I was going to ask for clarification on that. Is, you know, because Valerie, if you wouldn't mind, would it, can we designate, you know, like we have done at, like Venice Beach, can we designate areas for vending? And that's the, I think that's what you're asking, council member?
I'm just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to find a solution, given that I think that, you know, as you noted, given the geography of so many, the, kind of the topography of a lot of our parks, that for you to calculate what would be
Right.
...available space might be far more difficult. It might be easier for us to, in fact, just designate the areas and determine within that area that it could accommodate two vendors, or whatever the circumstances may be, because I think it's just, it's, you know, you know, you know your recreation space, you know where there might be availability for that, to not interrupt some of that, the physical activities that we want to preserve for our youth and the families and the passive recreation as well. So I think, you know, just to kind of flip it, just because of the nature of what, you know, the parks are to be, that we, I, you know, I love the vending, but it also has to be approached with a thoughtfulness, and also when I think about the resources of the department, just trying to find a, just trying to kind of flip it around and see if that would be a more suitable option.
Okay. Yes, again, you could look at where in a park vending is appropriate and calculate that space. I noticed that the rules and regulations require vending to be on hardscape, that is a path without blocking the path. So even in parks that have a two-per-acre rule or some other rule, there would be limited locations where vending would be allowed. And maybe because we are rushing to try to get something in place before the end of the year, we could start with a two-per-acre, but there will, and then do adjustments on a park-by-park basis, when you've had a chance to look at the availability of space and the physical features and the historic nature of vending in given parks, and...
Yeah, if I could, as a suggestion is, because there's a lot of parks, and it would be, I think it would be near impossible for us to get any agreement on precise locations in every park. I just don't think we'd ever get there. But we could, following a little bit what Valerie's saying, is that stay on the two-acre, but then call out specific parks, and I'll just use Echo Park, and then, you know, have that rule amended by park, but without saying exactly where they could, still keeping some distance from existing facilities, but call out, just generally call out the park. Like calling out Echo Park, the two-acre per rule wouldn't apply, and that we would limit it to, you know, total of three vendors following the same rules or something, but that would be a lot easier to enforce and a lot, probably a lot less controversial than trying to call out individual spaces inside of every park. But that would be my suggestion.
Yeah, and Hanson Dam is going to be a significant one in my area, too, because of the parking space, because of the open wildlife spaces that we have there. We would be, we would find ourselves in the very same circumstance.
Yeah.
So I think that's, you know, just trying, for me, I'm just trying to figure out what would be best for us to approach it, but I think that's...
Let us take, I mean, I think within the time limits, we could come up with some suggestions for the council to consider.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Busciano?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, we have come a long way, clearly, and we, I believe we're about to land this plane in legalizing, or not legalizing, but the framework of vending in the city of Los Angeles. You know, I pulled a meeting I had with Sharon Seau, our CLA, two years ago, and in that meeting, we were talking about whether to allow vending citywide, or create a hybrid model that establishes citywide regulations, whether to allow food or merchandise or both, whether to allow roaming cards, stationary only, or both, whether there should be a cap on the number of permits or not, whether LAPD should enforce, or street services investigators should enforce, or whether criminal penalties should apply or not. And this has been a process that, looking back, has been comprehensive, has been inclusive of everyone at the table, including our vendors, our business community, our city family. For one, I want to thank Dennis Gleason in my office, his help with the framework. And yes, of course, Senator Laura threw a little curveball at us, but we had to adjust and move forward. And for me, as you've heard me colleagues say numerous times, as a senior lead officer, I had, was tasked with addressing the quality-of-life concern of a number of street vendors in and around the parks, on the main corridors, and I found it to be a whack-a-mole process, where, you know, at the same time, we were moving the problem, shifting the problem, and I've come to realize that a citywide no banning, a citywide ban on vending clearly did not work for our city. Especially with LAPD, they were just inadequate enforcement because they were handling radio calls and going from point A to point B. So my point on, and the reason why I seconded the initial motion years ago, was to regulate street vending and ensure that we have proper enforcement. And before us, we have 28, you're recommending, street services, 28 additional inspectors at a cost of $3.2 million per year. And Mr. Blumenfeld, you are on that budget and finance committee, and I'm hopeful that you will help get that line item in the budget for these investigators, no pressure. It's on you, it's on you. But also to our mayor, I'm hopeful that the mayor includes this expenditure in the 1920 budget, so that we have a regulation in place that has some teeth to it. Because clearly, what has been happening in the city of LA has not been beneficial. My question is on the RFP, I believe we're recommending a third party to come in to help with the permit process. How soon can we expect, can we see that? And what's the timeline, if indeed we opt for that, the third-party permitting process, to come in to permit?
The instruction was for the CLA's office to...
Record your name again, Fernando?
I'm sorry.
Your name for the...
Felipe Chavez with the CLA's office. The CLA was asked to prepare an RFP and release the RFP. We are just waiting for a decision from the council to determine the type of program you would like, and whether that type includes an RFP option. So we're, but we already have the council instruction to do that.
Appreciate that. And as far as the educating, the, we have a recommendation on the best way to maintain enforcement under the confines of the new state law. And secondly, of the 28, how do you plan on deploying the 28 inspectors? Are you looking at LAPD bureau structure? What's your, the game plan on deployment?
Our plan is to deploy them on a 410 shift program, so that we can cover 10 hours, seven days a week.
Citywide.
Citywide. And we split them up by, we split the city into four quadrants. And so we apply a team of those to each of the quadrants, where we still have a roving team available to go to the hotspots throughout the city on a shift.
I struggle with that, frankly, because I, I know you go to the hotspots, but you're going to find yourself ignoring other parts of the city that people are calling, where those vendors who are not abiding by the rules, because you're being shifted to other parts of the city.
Well, we agree that 28 is not the ideal solution, but we think it, to start the program and to get some idea of how much we're really going to need as we move through this program and we get to a permitting state, that we would be in a better position to provide the numbers that it will take for a true citywide program.
So you, going back to the four quadrants, you're going to divide the inspectors per quadrant, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Well, I think at the end of the day, I remember the, that video that went viral on Benhamin Ramirez, and that video struck a chord on the need to legalize and properly regulate street vending. So I'm hopeful, and I know that our ultimate goal here is to create safe streets and have equal opportunity for all, and that we have laws that are secure and are enforceable. And I believe we, we arrived at that point, so I appreciate the leadership in this table and others who helped get to where we are today. Thank you. Including Valerie Flores.
Thank you.
Valerie was, thanks Valerie for your commitment to this. I know we've been talking about this for years and finally got to this point. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, last question. Public plazas and piazzas, where do they fall in within the category of regulating vending? Because I remember seeing that on the, in the report.
If these are open to the public and belong to a specific city department as our parks, then the enforcement would come from Recreation and Parks, or the department that is responsible for the public plaza.
We have, in the rules and regs, we put the language, and the language in, it's on page one, section two, subsection J. It says, "Distance from entranceway to any building, store, theater, movie, house, house of worship..."
I see it.
"...place of public assembly shall be a minimum of 20 feet away from that." So...
Thank you, Adele.
So that's where we have it in.
Appreciate that, thank you.
We'll have, next several months, sort of tighten up these rules and regs and get some consensus and approval as we move forward with the education and outreach efforts. So thank you, thank you, gentlemen, for your, for your efforts. I want to thank everyone who worked on this policy over the past, past several years, advocates, the business community, all departments, and my colleagues here on the committee and on council. A special shout-out to Jose Wezar, who co-authored this motion with me almost five years ago. But today and tomorrow are the final steps toward legalizing vending in Los Angeles. Thousands of micro entrepreneurs can come out of the shadows and join the formal LA economy, and that's what we want to do, and ensure that the food we all enjoy is going to be safe for the public. It's an historic moment, and I'm proud to join with my colleagues to make this policy possible. With that, colleagues, I'd like to make a few recommendations for your consideration. First, that we adopt ordinance number one, to include a citywide permit-based program for sidewalk vending. Two, that we approve the Bureau of Street Services rules and regulations as amended. Three, that we approve Recreation and Parks rules and regulations as amended. Four, that we note and file the CLA report. And five, that we instruct the Bureau of Street Services, with the assistance of CLA, CAO, city attorney, and other departments as necessary, to report back with a staffing plan and permit structure, including types of permits, fees, and rules and regulations based on the April 17, 2018 council action.
And Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Chair, for clarity. You say "as amended," and what were those amendments for the BSS approval, as well as the rab...
Yeah, the BSS was for the three-feet, the three-feet distance.
Okay.
Between vendors, as recommended by the city attorney.
And for the wrecking parks?
Yeah. Mr. President, the wrecking parks recommendations. I have one recommendation for both, and then most of my are technical amendments and recommendations related to Recreation and Parks. I have a technical amendment on item number two in the Recreation and Parks report, and that is in relation to vending, here's what it says literally, "Vending is restricted to non-motorized conveniences, stands, or push carts, which must be not more than eight feet in length and not more than three feet in depth, including wheels, axles, and other pertinences." And I think it, instead of two such wheels, I think it's supposed to be pertinences such as wheels. So that's a little technical amendment there. My second instruction is rule number three, add that all carts should have safety wheel locks, on rule number three.
How does it read currently?
It's, it just doesn't include safety wheel locks, and I'm happy to read it aloud. It's just, "Vendors shall not leave their vending conveyances, stands, or push carts unattended, period. All carts should have safety wheel locks," is my addition. My third one is, in relation to the 250-foot rule, I'd like to amend rule 11, amend it to 100 feet, and request Recreation and Parks, with the assistance of the city attorney, to report to council with a list of structures or buildings that provide scenic, recreational, or other park-specific amenities for the purposes of rule 11. And that would get us away from some of the obstacles, I think, to fair and equitable vending possibilities in our parks. And then, my fourth is, in relation to rule 13, amend to include a lesion park during Dodger Stadium events. That's just an admission that I think was overlooked. Number five is, my fifth is, rule number 32, add animal sales to prohibition, along with other prohibited sales, such as guns and things, add animals to that. My sixth instruction is Recreation and Parks Department, with the assistance of the CLA, CAO, city attorney, and any other department as necessary, to report back with a staffing plan and permit structure, including types of permits, fees, and rules and regulations based upon the April 17, 2018 council action that we took. Of course, this predates the Ricardo Lara law. And then, in relation to the BSS report, what I'd like to also recommend, instruct, is that the permit structure needs to involve our city's Office of Finance. In that report, within 90 days, involve the Office of Finance. And then my last instruction is in relation to both the sidewalk vending and Recreation and Parks, and that is, translation of the ordinance and rules or regulations in Espanol. Most of the vendors here today, in some, many instances, monolingual Spanish. We need to make sure that these rules and regulations are translated in Spanish for that obvious purpose. So I'd like that to be included for both.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, members?
Thank you.
Then the, that will be the order, recommendations as made, and additions made by Councilman O'Farrell. Any other discussion? No other discussion, that will be the order. Thank you. Committee members, we did it.
All right.
We did it. So far, so good. Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, I would just like to clarify for the record that this is all three committees...
Are going to be, sorry, excuse me.
All three committees are concurring with this approval, correct?
Yes, all three committees.
Yeah. Unanimous.
And also...
Public Works Committee is unanimous.
Arts and Parks also unanimous.
I'm sorry, I was, thank you very much.
Economic Development unanimous.